Okay, good evening everybody. We'll call the dean to order and start with the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with the approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections, Dan?
I have none.
None from me?
Brian? No. I just have one addition. We'll add something under the engineer's report for a couple of updates on a construction project.
One or two, which should be under my report, so it'd be I2, it's ambulance service.
Entertainer motion to approve as changed.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks Ryan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda. Just one note under that E water tower, that pay estimate's $479,964 and then period 95 cents. Any questions for administration on the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve with the correction.
Thanks, Dwayne.
I'll second that.
Thanks Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Visitors to the council, Green Step visitors. You're welcome to come on up, Chuck.
It's been a while since I've seen all you. I do. We've been up here, we've talked about Green Step before, I think, if I remember.
I haven't seen that one.
The city of Casson is now a Green Step Three city. We've moved up, thanks to all your efforts. You guys made some changes without even knowing about it, and you got us up there to do it, and that's wonderful, just wonderful. I have some guests here. Christine Morris Reese, she's a Green Step City and Nation's co-director, or MPCA. Chris Meyer, Southeast CERT Coordinator, Clean Energy Resource Team, and Emily Hartwell. Hope I got your names right. And they've got a couple things they want to say, and once again, I say thank you very much for moving forward with this. It's just great.
Thanks Chuck.
Good evening Mayor, Council. Really excited to be here tonight and join you to present your Step Three Award for the Green Step Cities Program. Green Step is a challenge assistance recognition program for cities in Minnesota who are working on their sustainability and quality of life improvements. And so this happens with a series of actions and maybe someday metrics that really indicate and show progress in the sustainability of the city. And for us, sustainability includes environmental sustainability, economic sustainability, and also social equity. And so all three of those have played a role. And I'll let, oh, and I'm, yep, Kristen, from the state of Minnesota and the Green Step City Program is a partnership of public and private entities. And so Chris here is with one of our partners and I'll let her.
Mayor and Council, congratulations. I am Chris Meyer, I'm the Southeast Regional Coordinator at the Clean Energy Resource Teams. CERTS is an organization that was, well, we're about 20 years old, and we were created by and assigned a mission by the Minnesota State Legislature, and that is to help communities with clean energy projects, which can be energy efficiency or can be renewables. We're a partnership organization, and the main partners are the University of Minnesota Extension to the Regional Sustainable Development Partnerships, the Minnesota Department of Commerce, the Energy Resources Division, the Great Plains Institute, that's a nonprofit in the cities, and the Southwest Regional Development Commission that's helped us with zoning for wind fields. So that's enough about CERTS. We assist the Green Step City Program because we follow the model that Extension does, and so we have coordinators throughout the state. And so it's my job as the coordinator to help cities, we have 12 cities across southeastern Minnesota that are Green Step Cities. And it is frankly, while it isn't very many of the hours, it's my favorite part of the job because I get to see folks like Nancy, or like Chuck, or like you all, who are doing great work to make your cities more livable.
I wanted to just highlight a few of those great things that we see the city of Casson working on. And so you all joined back in 2011 as one of our, as one of the first cities in the Green Step Cities Program. And to date, the city has reported 49 completed actions and 17 best practices out of the 29 best practices. So that's a real achievement right there. Some examples that are, some of the actions that I'm sure you all are very familiar with are the solar panels right here at City Hall, as well as many other locations that we got to take a tour with Chuck and Nancy today around the city and see some of those other sites as well. Updated LED street lighting, having a robust tree canopy that covers 75% of residential areas, having a library that's designed as a community shelter, and then, you know, also thinking about purchasing locally. And we even heard that your new council desk here is from, you know, a local business as well. So those are all things that play into sustainability, and we really want to congratulate you for those and the many other actions that have been reported with the city.
So, Kristen, you have presented this award in many cities across the state. How do we proceed? The others' blocks are over there.
Yeah, so Nancy had your Step One and Two that the city has had on display, and so we bring the Step Three to join with that. And she said she wants to take a quick photo?
Yeah, if you want to go up to the mayor.
Okay.
I was thinking Nancy, Nancy, why don't you get in the picture since you're the one who works.
Yeah.
You guys would be much better.
Nancy, I'll take the picture.
There we go.
I'll take the picture.
We're in the back here, a couple, a couple of people standing each side of the field, there you go.
One of the reasons why I'm glad.
One whistle, oh, sorry.
Because then nobody's fees it.
If I'd known that, I would have.
I don't move the mayor chair there?
Okay, one of those will come out, hold up.
Chair, yeah, okay. Like I said, I would have brushed that.
Photography expert.
Stand up on us.
Random charge is 18% for photographing. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's have Nancy hopefuls.
Thank you all for coming, appreciate it. And thanks to staff for all they do for helping that become reality. Okay, on to, I don't have any cards. Did you get any cards, Linda? Nope? Okay. Old Business, Organized Collection. This has to do with garbage service.
So this is a project I've been working on a little bit, kind of in light of Byron moving towards that organized collection. It's something that I know the council has visited before, so I just wanted to provide it to you as an informational item. A lot of cities there are moving in that direction, like you said, Byron is a very recent one. So there are a couple items in your packet there. I've included a memo regarding the different advantages and disadvantages that many cities see, and also including the estimates from the MPCA, and those are somewhat older numbers, but they don't update their numbers on a regular basis. So you could see that there's a sizable percentage, about 35% of cities that use organized collection, which is that one or a group of collectors as a, in one contract, collect. And the advantages typically are seen as price per paid per household is generally lower, lower impact to our streets, and there'd be fewer trucks rolling, so less road damage. The city would have greater involvement and ability to manage collection, and then it's more of a standardized service. And the disadvantages to that organized collection is the residents don't get to choose the collector. Sometimes the greater administrative role for the city can be a negative. Small collectors may have a higher cost of entry, although in our community, we don't really have a lot of small collectors, so that may not be an issue for us. And then there's a statutory requirement, however, that's something that we'd handle at, be our regular meeting schedule. So I'm just laying that out for you to review and see if there's any discussion or any questions you have. I've also included the League's guidance on this and some draftlet language potentially for the city code that could be utilized, as well as the last item in there is some feedback from other local communities. There were a number of questions that were asked, and then the answers that they gave. I thought it was interesting to see what actual other cities that have gone through it would deal with. One thing that some people think is that this will eliminate the ability for other companies. However, typically what happens is that companies that are already previously serving the community would have the ability to bid into one contract. And so for example, if Waste Management has 50% of the customer base, and Sunshine has 10, and Hometown has 40, they would be able to serve in one contract through those percentage numbers at the same time if they chose to do so. So it wouldn't necessarily lock them out of their current customer base. In fact, it would guarantee that they're able to serve up to that percentage of the customer base. But, so anyways, just provide some information and wanted to see if there's any questions and if the council has any direction or not. But it's a, it's a project I've been looking at just to see and try to give my own information to see where it's all at, so.
Feedback right away, or, I mean, I have a couple opinions, but I'll share them after.
Well, you know, I've actually talked about it in the past. I think it's actually a good thing, per se, because you're going to have a lot less wear and tear. When I lived, the different house, there was three neighbors, all had the same hauler, and there was three different trucks came to pick up the garbage. So not only, you know, here you got one truck doing it all, there you had one hauler picking up three, but it was three different trucks. So you had a lot of wear and tear.
I like the savings. It does save our, our individuals in town. And I will say, that is probably the biggest benefit I see is those are, those two actually, it's wear and tear on the streets and then the cost savings for the garbage. Typically, I would say historically, in all the cases that I've seen, it has been a substantial savings, at least initially.
Even when you factor in the additional cost of staff time, because staff's going to have a lot to do with this. That's got to be a factor.
You know, when I discussed it with our utility billing department, the staff time component is primarily adding additional lines onto their bills. So initially, you would have some larger time commitment, but after the fact, it would be automated, you know, so that you'd see those. Those charges don't necessarily, they don't change on a monthly basis.
Right, I'm going to talk about the one example here where somebody said when somebody gets assistance for their heat and their water that doesn't cover garbage, the city gets stuck with the garbage bill, or gets assessed their property.
Right.
Now we're, we're going to get involved in it.
That's how it would be done with, you know, in the winter time with, I mean, as I said, there's positives and negatives to it, absolutely. I'm not, I'm not debating that, but, I mean, in all the cities that I've seen, there has been a substantial savings. Partly, and partly it's due to the fact that when folks first start off with a garbage bill, they get whatever contractor they get, and of course, they call and they try to get the cheapest price. What happens is you get into a contract, and over time, those charges tend to accumulate. Because, you know, you don't think about, you know, you don't think about going and getting a different garbage hauler, you know, every three years or something like that, because you're just, you have your garbage hauler, and if they increase their bill 5% every year, you just think, well, that's the cost of doing business. And so most folks don't come back until they realize, so anyways, that's, that's just what I've seen, but, you know, it's a fair point.
Did any of the cities that, that you talked to, because the one concern I would have is if they failed to pick up somebody's trash and they tried to call. I know, having tried to call our carrier who bought out a local company, it's a joke. So if it's a citywide contract, is that something City Hall would have to respond?
Well, I mean, so there's pluses and negatives. The negative would be, from a staff perspective, we would get those complaint calls, probably on a much more frequent basis. Now, I will say, we do get some complaint calls already, and usually our answer is, well, you, whether you knew it or not, don't have garbage picked up through the city, you have it through your customers. Some people think that the city does the garbage, even though they had to have signed a contract with someone else to do it. But, so we do get some of those, but that would probably be the big drawback. The plus would be that you would have the city having generally more leverage and a greater ability to communicate also. Whereas right now, I mean, we don't get involved with that because it's between you and whoever you've hired to, to do your collection. So I see that as probably the biggest drawback, is the volume of complaints that we would probably take at the staff level.
And any other one is you're forced to do business with a company you don't want to do business with, as a private homeowner or business owner?
Well, I mean, I think, from my perspective, you'd be doing business with the city, so it would be just like any of our other utilities. And we would be the ones doing the business with those other companies through a negoti, we would issue an RFP, it would be request proposals. We would be required to discuss it with each of those companies that participates. So we're not locking anybody out from doing it, and then they would have the opportunity to even collaborate. If Waste Management, Hometown, and Sunshine, or whoever else collects, I think, what's the one on Claremont?
But have you tried to call Waste Management? I'm not trying to pick on individual companies, but have you tried to call Waste Management when there's a problem?
I don't have.
We've canned out behind our buildings for three years that we tried to get them to pick up.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just, just saying, you'd be forcing some people to have a Waste Management can at their place that don't want to deal with them. And then the city is going to take on another service that we're going to just spend money on that doesn't have any benefit to the city other than less wear and tear on the road.
Well, but so, I mean, I guess the, the counter, so the way these contracts generally work is that they collaborate on a price, and then they continue to serve the customers that they have. Only it's, it's through.
Rob, then you, can you still switch? Can somebody switch carriers within that model?
They should be able to, and it's been done in other cities. And I said, this would be a negotiation, and we'd have to flesh out some of these details, because I don't have a perfect answer to you on that. But the way it would be designed is that, you know, if you're already being served by Waste Management, it just, you'd still have a contract with, you have a, the city would have the contract, they would still serve that percentage of their current service level. Because we can't box anybody out that isn't legal to do if they're already serving in your community.
Right.
So.
Now, I guess it'd be interesting to hear more information, but on the surface, I'm not a big fan of the city getting into any more businesses that we don't need to be in. While we take on that service level, and then that's going to be eventually another employee, it's going to be all, I mean, it's a headache.
The only reason I look at it is because I do think that it would be a cost savings for our residents. And that's the only reason, I'm looking, trying to look at the residents and saying, I know that, you know, what, it's $25 a month or something like that, $75 a quarter. I know that's what somebody might pay on their bill, whereas you've got, you know, very similar communities, Guanamigos, where they're paying $12 a month for their garbage, you know. So that's the only reason I'm even looking at it, because, yeah, I agree, definitely going to be a headache, definitely going to have, at staff level, I mean, it's not necessarily, I want to take it on, but I just think, that's why I'm even looking at it, is because it would be a cost savings, potential cost savings.
What's the potential cost savings these other communities have realized?
What's that?
What's the potential cost savings these other communities that have done it?
You know, I don't have that answer right tonight, but I can definitely find that out.
Because the competitive as the garbage business is, it would just, it just, I guess I'm just confused how they would be able to come in and do it for 10% less when they're getting nickled and dimed at the dump and taken up to Rochester and everything they're doing anyway with these dump fees, how are they going to be able to come in and do it for more than 10% less to make it worth the while of the city taking this on? That'd be the big thing I'd like you to find out.
I don't know exactly the answer to that tonight, so.
And part of it, on that, I think some of their cost savings is they'll be going house to house, they can do one section at a time, they're.
They have the same customers they have now.
But they might take on, they might get up more, is where they're getting.
And the companies might collaborate to say, hey, we're going to, you're going to take the northeast quadrant of town, because that's your 25%. You know, I mean, it depends on how it ends up working out. That's, that's how I would see that, probably doing some cost savings.
Tim, that's something I would be interested in learning more about, is how they actually divide the territories up.
Sure.
They would, they would have to reach an agreement on that.
Right.
There's no, they would, it would just be something that they, if they wanted to bid together, that would be part of their bid, I think.
Because I've done it, I mean, obviously here, we've got at least four different services that come through my neighborhood every week. And then in Atlanta, we had one company that contracted with the city, they came, one day you put out your trash, one day you put out your recycling, and that was it.
Are there any other good ques, I mean, these are all good comments. This is what I mean, I was responding to some discussion, because it's one of those things I know we've talked before, and I just brought some more detail, mostly because Byron's looking at similar sized communities, similar profile. And I just want to make sure that we're, our residents have the best crack at it.
You can reach out to Zimberta, they've been doing it now for about eight years, I think. They would do like a five-year contract. They actually had just one hauler bid at every time. So after the five-year, a different one, but I think they're on about eight years up there.
I'm going to wait and see, you know, at, at face value, it's a low priority for me, but I'd need more information.
Okay. Well, and that's, and that's perfectly fine. You know, this is not something that we have to deal with tonight. Just, just wanted to bring it to you, just something that kind of worked on a little write-up. So anyway, I have more questions, and I will ask them and try and find out some answers, and I'll bring it back.
Sounds good. Thank you. New Business, Permit for Secondary Water Meter.
So, you, yeah, you've got.
Oh, wait, yep, okay, G2 Development, well. All this must be an old, I grabbed this off the.
There's those three items for your G2. You've got development agreement.
Yep.
And these are, I know that I, it wasn't able to get to you quite as early. You had early versions, and then the most recent versions were available this afternoon, so those are loaded into your packets. You've got three different items. You've got a development agreement, an option agreement, and then a right of first refusal document there. And these are all related to the, the discussion about the Hamilton property purchase over in the Vail subdivision, which, you know, the council's all familiar with. So, you know, and they've, they've got some representatives here, you know, we've gone back and forth a lot, and I know it's not always the easiest process, so appreciate their patience and working with us, and the city attorney did a lot of work to try and review these documents. So I don't know, Melanie, if you've got anything you want to highlight, maybe in the red line version of the development agreement. I think that was the one where we had more items really to talk about.
Yeah, I did make some changes to the development agreement because this is just a little bit of a different situation. When we have done development agreements in the past with people who are actually plating the property or subdividing the property, we've had different requirements. Well, and I take that back, the, the requirements have actually been the same. In this case, the city is the divider, the city is the one who platted this property. So the city is the one who's required to, to put in that infrastructure, the road, the utilities, and things like that. So it, those, there were a couple of things that might have looked a little different and just sort of made you question, and I, I just wanted to explain what the difference was.
Okay. Any questions for the attorney on that? Ryan, Mel?
The only thing I noticed in the development agreement that I'm sure was just never cited is Section 6.6. It doesn't specifically name which state the law governing clause. Which is page eight or nine, depending on what the law of the state.
Yeah, that's a good catch.
I know, in the definitions under state, it does say state means state of Minnesota. So, I mean, I think, I don't think that'd be a huge change for us to add that, just saying state of Minnesota in 6.6 with it.
I, I doubt that they would.
Any objections to the state of Minnesota?
It's already defined in the definition, so I don't think you need to add it.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. We've just been burned on that line before, so it's kind of, kind of a sensitive area. Okay, any questions, Dan or Dwayne? Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's a little different since we're the ones developing the lamp, so, okay.
All right, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve that development agreement.
Okay, I'll look for that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Dwayne, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And you've got those other two, yep.
So Casson Park Place LLC Option to Purchase is the first one.
That's right, and included in that document, you've got a map layout that shows the exact areas that we're talking about, just for clarity's sake. Makes it a little easier to see. The option is for the property for the west of the, the first parcel, potentially another building there. And then, just for clarification, the right of first refusal is for that property to the north, which currently the folks from the sand company are undergoing a process, but there may be some interest in the future at some point.
Okay. Any questions on that?
I'll move to approve the option to purchase.
Okay. Thanks Dwayne, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The right of first refusal is on that lot across the street to the north.
That's right.
So basically that gives Casson Park Place the right of first refusal, if the sands were to back out.
If the sands, folks are not, they'll make their project go forward, that's right.
Okay. Makes sense to me. Any questions, anybody? No? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Dwayne, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, so that was those three there. Thanks, guys, for coming and, look forward to seeing the project get started. Appreciate it. All right, I'll drive by and check it out.
End of next week.
And, all right, I'll give it to the end of the week. Okay, all right, give it close first, and we look forward to seeing the development go through. Appreciate it. Okay, now Permit for Secondary Water Meter.
That's right. So including your package, you've got information on that. This is something that our, actually CMS has brought to us, and you've got the memo there from Cassie. Apparently, they're looking at needing permits, CMS wants to have that inspected. So you've got her action there, she's asking for a flat fee permit of $60 to be added to our fee schedule for the, for the CMS inspection of the secondary meters. I guess it's similar to the roof, the roof permit, if you want to say that, for Reshingler or something like that.
So basically, we're just passing this through CMS through the inspection.
Exactly, that's right. You know, otherwise, we're the ones who end up paying those fees.
Right. Yep. No, that makes sense to me. Any questions on that?
Well, this assumes that the plumbing is done by a professional?
That's correct. I mean, I think she's got it in there that it would be.
Says the meters are plumbed, but it doesn't say by who.
Yeah, I mean, CMS is doing the inspection, so that's, I mean, I guess it's up to them to determine if it's been plumbed properly.
Right.
Because you can't, you can't designate as a professional, because individuals can actually plum that in. It's a standard.
I think you've got a secondary one.
I do.
And did you, did you use a plumber?
I have a secondary. I, I had the plumber do it, but then he did it wrong, and he had to come back and do it right. Because he ran it, was going to run it through both meters, I'm like, why did I have you put this in? I could have done that. I said, it's nothing, so he had to come back and.
I never built for the city. You're watering your yard, Dan.
That has actually happened in the past where people's had them.
Yeah, that's true. And, I mean, it's been something we've seen an increased demand for this last two years because we've had these really dry months. So people, I mean, and with the new homes as well. I mean, I know one of the neighbors, two houses down from me, had 91,000 gallons they used in, in the last pay period, or the last, you know, billing period. And, I mean, that's a lot of water.
Yep. All right, so this is just to ensure that CMS is going to do the inspection and it's hooked up correctly.
That's right.
Okay, all right. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks Ryan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And to make sure that adds, added on to our fee schedule then.
Thank you. Event Permit for a Block Party. Do we know the date of this block party?
September 10.
Oh, there it is, Dintown, yep, okay.
That's right.
Okay.
I mean, it's relatively straightforward, you know, we created this process so that folks would, and let us know, and so we have good contact information. And they are asking to block off portions of the street, so the police chief had no objections and.
This is.
Good, yes, they did.
His house is right in the middle of the block party, so.
He's probably holding the block party, really.
Police chief would be there, he had somebody put this in for him, didn't he?
He knows, he knows the rules. So, I mean, we don't have any objections to it. It's not an area we have concerns with.
It's not a traffic area at all, it's local.
Move to approve.
Thanks Dwayne, do I have a second?
A second.
Thanks Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Topic of the year, Cannabis.
Sure, and so this is a big topic, and I know the police chief and our liquor store manager both looked at this presentation from Eckberg Lammers. So I've included that for you just to review, as well as the information, the fact list from the League of Minnesota Cities. They came out with that recently. The legislature approved a very big change to the legislation regarding the edible cannabis products and allowing THC in those up to 5% now, as opposed to where they have been historically, where they've kind of had a gray area. So a lot of communities are looking at moratoriums. I know Wilmer, Marshall, I think there's three or four other ones, Wyndham, that have already put moratoriums in, and that, what that is, is a 12-month period that allows cities to create the ordinances regarding the legalization and how they want to govern that. I'm not asking for that tonight, but it is something that could be considered, depending on what, how the council feels. You know, we talked about that just briefly before the meeting started, you know, the liquor store will not be having these products, at least not at this time, because they've been advised that they are, they're not permissible for the, for the liquor store to serve. And I know Kathy is not particularly interested in having the products either, because she does think there may be some, she has some concerns with mixing alcohol and THC, it seems like it might be a bad choice. But our legislators have made this decision, and they've left it to the municipalities really to create their own set of rules or to choose not to do so. So it's informational for you tonight, and, you know, I know you're probably hearing about this too, Melanie, and if you've got any feedback from all the other communities that you serve on it.
Um, we've seen, I've seen some guidance or some emails come up from the League. Um, I, we've seen, I've seen some guidance or some emails come up from the league, but I, none of my cities have any, um, you know, dispensaries or anything like that, so I haven't dealt with any of it firsthand.
I mean, I know, for example, I mean, the, the new smoke shop at Plaza 57, I think there's interest from them, and I would imagine any kind of business of that nature would probably have interest in selling these products, because I do think there's potential for revenue for them. So, suffice to say, I mean, this is informational for you, if there's any questions, I can certainly contact the league, or, um, if you'd like to do any kind of other changes, please, uh, let me know, like I said, the, I think the PowerPoint lays it out quite well, it does not affect our employees, um, we have, uh, the same rules and restrictions that would be provided currently, um, you're not able to, to, even if you consumed it and it's still in your system from the day before, it's still, if you spike on a, a random drug test, it's, it's no different than it would be now. So for us, that's a positive, um, I think we don't want anybody driving a city vehicle or driving any vehicle frankly, and having an issue like that, so, um, with that, I would just take any kind of guidance, the, or feedback the council has.
I would encourage council to come back with some questions for the next meeting, cause this is, I've gotten several questions about this, you know, when's Casson gonna allow it or where and all that kind of stuff, so, I think we should get on this sooner than later, as far as what we're gonna do as a city. And it's good the liquor store can't, or isn't advisable to do it, cause, again, if we're gonna approve something like that, I'd rather see private enterprise take it and not the city get in the business, so, personally, in my opinion. So if you have questions, comments, concerns, or talk to people, bring them back for the next time, so we can give Tim some direction on what we want to go forward with.
Do we have anything presently that pertains to cigarette sales in our city code?
We do license them, we do have, well, actually, I think the county licenses is
County's a tobacco licensor.
Yeah, county tobacco is the tobacco licensing, so I don't know that we do have anything that we directly deal with them. Some communities do, I know in a previous community I served in, we, we did every year QuickTrip all the different places, now QuickTrip doesn't do cigarettes anymore, but, um,
They don't?
Not to the twenty-one and under anyways.
There's a whole real big wall.
Yeah, there is, but it's only for the twenty-one and over.
Oh, okay.
Um, so, yeah, I know we had permits, but we don't here, so I think the county handles all that.
That was just the one thing that the league's guidance seemed to indicate, or that the law firms, I don't remember which one was, start there and perhaps see if there's any similarities that you could do between existing ordinance and proposed.
So, let's just see what we have, dig up in there if there's anything with tobacco.
Okay. Sounds good.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, on to administrator's report.
Okay, I've got a couple of items in there for you, let me bring that up. Um, just wanted to highlight, we do have a walkthrough tomorrow for the library project, so hopefully we're nearing a conclusion with that project with this vendor, um, with this contractor, hopefully we're getting close on that. Uh, we had a very good park board meeting recently, I think it was very helpful to see what they, uh, have going on, we had some feedback, um, just wanted to highlight that the, uh, the pool will have some amended hours towards the end of August. Uh, Ron let me know today that due to staffing, starting on August sixteenth, the pool will be open from twelve-thirty PM until five PM, and then it will close at that time. So that's something to, uh, keep in mind if anyone has questions on that, uh, other than that, you know, we're evaluating how that went this year, we had positive and, uh, some negative feedback too, from different folks, and so, we are looking at tweaking the hours again next year, and I think we're gonna try and set those hours, uh, even earlier in the season, so that folks, uh, that want to get a permit have a even better idea, we did have those hours available in March, before the permits were, um, sales started, but some folks said that they didn't feel like they had enough time to make a decision, so that's fair. Um, we've got some information regarding some different things from the league, uh, which is, uh, if you're ever interested in those things, I, uh, if you have any desire to do league-related activities or join one of these committees, certainly I think that could be beneficial. Included in Dropbox, you've got a big chunk of information regarding the ambulance service, um, Dodge Center, um, currently the city runs the, the ambulance service, and, uh, they've indicated that they are having some financial difficulties, um, so they did meet with some of the city representatives, uh, for other cities in, in the county, and they're having another meeting in August on the twenty-third to, uh, meet with Ellers, which is a financial company that, um, helps set up a special tax district up in northern Minnesota for a number of small communities that had ambulance services. They're, they're concerned about the continued viability of that, and, um, I'm, in essence, they're looking for additional financial support from communities, um, we had a good conversation, and I think the other cities and myself brought up some good points about, um, how we view the service, it's obviously a very good service, but there are some questions about, uh, funding and what level service should be supported, that sort of thing, and So, there'll be more information to come on that, I did include, I said, as I said, that presentation we received yesterday for your packet, so if you have a chance to look through it, uh, please do and, and let me know what you have, uh, in terms of questions, or if you're interested in attending that meeting with the, uh, the folks from Ellers, we can certainly get you over there, it'll just be over in Dodge Center at City Hall there. Um, other than that, the other big item I have is this, uh, CM, uh, PAS update, um, you should have gotten an invitation for their annual meetings at your desk, so, if you can make that, I think it's, uh, it's very interesting, they have a good speaker coming up. One thing that you may have seen in the news yesterday, the MISO, which we've talked about before, which is the mid, mid continental kind of group that governs electricity in our area, they are authorizing new power lines, um, so some very large new power lines throughout the state, going into South Dakota, North Dakota, and into Wisconsin, and, uh, there may be an investment opportunity for the city of Casson, um, as a hedge against our transmission costs. So oftentimes, what's recommended is to try and buy transmission, and that allows you to offset some of those costs that you might have from increased transmission costs, which, as the council knows, has been a problem for us this year, so, um, we're gonna continue to follow up on that, if there's an opportunity for us to do some investment in transmission, I think I'll be bringing that to council at some point in the future, uh, for consideration, because I, I do think it would be a prudent hedge. Other than that, there's, uh, some changes to our truth in taxation, um, I, as far as I know, Nancy, we haven't received a form from the county yet, I know that in Gozy County, they have generated their form already, but
No, but from what I understand, every year we have to submit a summarized budget to the state as well as we publish it, and from what I understand, it's almost gonna be the same, but yes, we're still waiting for final guidance on that, so, we might already have the form already ready to go, we might just have to tweak it a little.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not anticipating a large change for our process, because we always try to be transparent, so it'll just be an additional form that, that has to be filled out, but, um, other than that, I would take any questions anyone has.
Okay.
Just one note, uh, the email that Pat sent out, the library walkthrough's Friday.
Right, okay, well then, it's been revised, cause I thought it was tomorrow morning, eight o'clock.
And I will double check and see if I'm looking at an old email.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Tim, appreciate it, um, let's see, engineers' report.
Alright, real quick, it's Nightmare Council, uh, Trump Highway fifty-seven project, uh, as you probably all know, uh, the north portion of that project from Seventh Street up to Eleventh is now closed, uh, removals and installation utilities are gonna start here, um, so that is closed, the businesses on the north side, Houston's, uh, Family, uh, Dowler, Carriage House, et cetera, all open for business, there's some signage up there, uh, they're a little difficult to get to with this part of the contract documents to keep that open, so, there was an update that MinDOT sent out, um, and it's posted on city's social media now, so we're doing our best to get that word out, so, um, that will be closed, and again, until fall, until we open the road back up, so, that's fifty-seven. Uh, Lyons Park and Library Parking Lot, uh, that construction has started, uh, specifically at Lyons Park, um, that's gonna last a few weeks, um, so those facilities are gonna remain open, the parking lot to Lyons Park will be closed intermittently when we're actually doing excavation, uh, but generally will be open, uh, there shouldn't be any impacts to the library itself, um, so that's moving forward. Uh, Fairgrounds Water Tower, Fifth Avenue, as you probably have all driven through there, there's a section of gravel road in the next coming weeks, I think next week they're talking about paving that, um, there's gonna be a fair amount of traffic on that road, or there already kind of is in normal conditions, but having the highway shut down, we're gonna see a fair amount, so we'll probably have a day or two of closure there, where they're gonna have to walk around on eight, so, uh, we'll try to get a date and get that pinned down and, uh, let the citizens know, um, that will be a, a kind of a nasty little detour through residential area, uh, we'll try to get in there and get out as soon as we can, um, and we'll get that, uh, word out, uh, once we know, uh, more solid date from the contractor. Um, and then lastly, uh, we'll end maybe on a positive note, uh, Safe House School that we awarded a few weeks ago, as you guys probably remember, it was, uh, well, uh, over our budget, so I went back to MinDOT, asked if there's any funds available, um, state aid has produced a little over two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars more for that project, so, um, that's gonna be additional money coming in from the DOT, so, it's exciting to help offset some additional costs, so, and that project will get going here this fall.
I was gonna say, do we have a, a start date for them?
We do not, no, just signed the contracts.
All that work with is have to have it done by the fall or whatever.
Yep, we'll have it done this year, that's the schedule, so.
Are they gonna front load that, that project part up by the school then?
Yeah, so the, the Fifth Avenue Sixteenth Street intersection was part of the contract documents included, getting that done before school, um, so that's one of the things, once we get the contracts here, that we're gonna, um, talk to the contractor about getting that done here, cause the school's gonna be open before we know it, so.
Yeah, I'm out here.
Projects, that's the portion of the project that has a special schedule, cause that intersection is, we don't think that's nasty, so, um, when the school's in and out, coming in and out, so, we do have that in the documents, so. That was it, uh, quick update again, go to the city's website or the MinDOT's website on fifty-seven, it should all should be there, so.
Thanks, Brandon, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, personnel.
Alright, step on up Ian, this is Ian Albers, he's our new, uh, community development assistant, um, and he's been working, uh, for about two weeks now for the city, and, uh, we saw him got his business cards, so, there's supply chain issues affecting the business card supply in Rochester, so hopefully we'll have those soon, but he is all hooked up and he's been working hard, he's prepping the EDA packet this month, and then, he's actually working already on some of the lower-tier planning items, they've been working with Brad to try and transition some of those lower-tier items over to his, uh, portfolio responsibilities, and we've also got him trained on utility bill payment. So, you know, he's gonna be a jack of all trades, um, but really excited to have him here tonight, and Ian, maybe just tell him, tell the folks about, uh, yourself a little bit. Yeah, so, my name is Ian Albers again, uh, I grew up here in Minnesota, about two hours to the northwest, just outside of Waconia, uh, on a little hobby farm there, and then, let's see, I went to school at the University of Minnesota Twin Cities, and I got degrees in landscape design and planning, and Spanish studies with a minor in geography, so, I graduated in May of twenty-one, so. And one thing we're really excited about with his, uh, Spanish language skills, we're also gonna be looking at translating all of our documents over into Spanish for, especially for the EDA, uh, with their loan, you know, I know that we don't have a huge Spanish population, but there are a few different people at different times, and we just think that's gonna be really beneficial to us long-term, so, so I've got plenty of work for, for Ian to, to do, and he's really hit the ground running and we're excited to have him, so, any questions for him?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ian, appreciate it.
Alright, attorneys' report, remote meetings.
Did you wanna kick that off, or do you want me to?
Well, we had a request, um, there was some questions just, uh, about remote meetings and how that would work, and, um, how we've been doing in the past, and so, I know at the last meeting, uh, we requested the city attorney take a look at it, and, um, I have included the, the league's guidance in there, and I just, I think we were just gonna see if there was any future guidance or further things you had for us, Mel.
Yeah, I think, you know, uh, there's a difference between when there is, uh, emergency being declared, so I don't know that we need to worry too much about anything that happened during the pandemic. Um, moving forward though, if we are gonna be, if any council members are going to be attending, um, via, uh, uh, some kind of an, you know, Zoom or, or Skype or WebEx, anything with an audio and video connection, we need to make sure that all of the members can hear and see each other, and I know we've always been able to hear each other, but maybe that see part of it, we, we need to be concerned about that, and that, members of the public also have to be able to see and hear. Which means, well, and, and the member who is not, uh, in attendance or is attending remotely, uh, we need to give notice of where they're attending from, so that if any members of the, and it has to be open to the public, so if any members of the public want to attend the meeting where that other member is at, um, or that, where the other council member is at, they have to be able to have that option to do that. Um, and then the minutes of the meeting, or, I'm sorry, votes should be done by roll call, um, and then the minutes just have to reflect where any, uh, uh, member who is attending remotely, uh, where they're attending from and, and why.
So, did I interpret it wrong that, that public access, you've got an exemption of three meetings?
That, it, it's, no, you, they, it's, you have to, you can have three meetings if you also have a, a statement from your doctor, and it has to be during, and that exception is only during the During a state of emergency as well.
Okay.
Any other questions on, on that, and I know that, uh, you know, we always try to be open to the public, and that's certainly our goal, and do it, improve in any way we can, so, I think we'll definitely make sure we meet those criteria going forward, so.
We've had some pretty rocky times with our technology, is there a way to, is there an upgrade we can do, or something different so that, actually with Brad joining us the last couple of meetings, it's pretty common now that we have somebody joining us remotely, not necessarily a council member, but if that could just be a little more smooth, it would make it a lot easier.
Well, it certainly was my goal, and it's, uh, one of the key, I think, is to, uh, make sure that they're hooked up before we get the meeting started, because generally, we have just not had that, those issues when we meet, you know, we do our planning meeting with Brad on a regular, on a weekly basis, and we never had an issue, but, no, I agree, and I mean, it's something we just have to be aware about, and, um, if there's a better way to do it, we'll keep evaluating that, so.
Having done multiple remote meetings, including a couple with the council meetings myself, um, a lot of the technical issues are dealing with the transmission from the site in which you're working remotely from.
Sure.
Yeah, so, when I was in Arizona, sitting in a hotel courtyard, the, the wifi signal probably wasn't as strong as it was when I was sitting in the hospital room at St. Mary's Hospital with, using Mayo's what, uh, internal wifi, so, I think that's part of it, I agree, we need to upgrade where we can with our technical abilities, but it's not gonna be a cure-all.
I will say, we are moving away from the, um, the go-to meeting format, we're gonna be utilizing Microsoft Teams.
Oh, okay.
So, as part of a larger technology upgrade to the Microsoft three sixty-five suite, which we were mandated to do, because they don't offer the, the licenses anymore, so, we're gonna be required to do it, but it's gonna be a positive too, because I know, for example, um, you know, Brandon's indicated there, his office uses that Teams, and it seems to be a very efficient and effective way to do it, and, so I think that in and of itself is a lot less clunky, um, you know, utility for the online meetings, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Mel.
Correspondents, there's this notification there that was put together for the, uh, candidacy filing, opens up here in August for two weeks, and I think that was published in the paper, was it not?
Yes.
Yeah, so opens the second of August and closes the sixteenth, and, uh, the times are in there, so, it was in the paper.
One more thing to highlight would be that there is the special election coming up, and the primary election is coming up very quickly, um, so, something to, to put out, we'll be putting that out on the Facebook page for the city to remind people, um, there hasn't been a lot of discussion of it, but definitely an important thing for folks, uh, if they're interested in that sort of thing.
Perfect, alright, well, thanks everybody, we're gonna meet again the second Wednesday of August, look for a motion for adjournment.
Make that motion.
Thanks, Stan, do I have a second, Ryan, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned, thanks for coming, everybody.